Well, members of the City Council, please take your seats. Call to order the, uh, the meeting of the special meeting of the City Council at 6:00 PM today, April 9th, ask the clerk to read the roll.
For special meeting, April 9th, 2018, Counselor Capone.
Here.
Counselor Delisola.
Here.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Here.
Counselor DePiero.
Here.
Counselor Hanlon.
Here.
Counselor Marchese.
Here.
Counselor Matusky.
Here.
Counselor McKinnon.
Here.
Counselor Seminelli.
Here.
And President Napolitano.
Here.
You have ten members present, you have a quorum.
Do we have ten members present, we have a quorum, I ask you to stand and salute the flag?
By the flag of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the public for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ask clerk to read the one item on the agenda for the special meeting.
In accordance with the provisions of, of the Everett City Charter, Article 3, Section 5B, I hereby call a special meeting of the City Council to be held as follows, on Monday, April 9th, 2018, at 6:00 PM. The subject is, uh, item number one, is to conduct a public meeting in accordance with Massachusetts general laws in order to discuss the capital needs and funding requirements to establish a Chapter 74 approved vocational technical education program.
Get a motion to invite the mayor and staff to board.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Good evening. Good evening. Um, so I, I think it's no surprise, uh, to any of you that, uh, I've been a proponent of vocational programming, um, if you follow me on social media, which maybe we shouldn't do that anywhere around here, but, uh, um, if you follow me on social media, you'd see the last five or so years, uh, I've been touring different vocational schools and just looking at the opportunities they serve, uh, children. Um, so as, as of recently, um, uh, the schools have agreed and we're, uh, on the right path to bring in some vocational program to the city. But before they go any further, um, uh, there's gonna be a capital expense needed to renovate the high school, and I thought it'd be in the best interest to have this meeting with you all. Uh, as you know, I have a capital improvement plan, but it's not my plan, it's our plan, uh, mine and yours together. Um, and it's, it is, I think it's about $600,000 in, in cost to renovate, uh, five, uh, six existing cla- uh, to create six classrooms. Um, the staffing needed, uh, will be in this year's budget. Uh, there is an expense to the staffing, uh, and Charlie, Assistant Superintendent Obremsky can speak a little further about that. But before they go any further and it gets, you know, we, they're having stakeholder meetings, which I know a few of you have been to, um, mayor, I know you've come, and, uh, Counselor McGlaughlin has been in a couple, and I know you all have talked to me about it, each individual, uh, we have had this conversation. But I want them to come up here, uh, they've have, they have some consultants that are working on this, um, on the programming, I want you to see the programming, understand what's going on, because this will be in the CIP plan, and if you agree to it, it would be probably one of the first things that we ask to be, um, appropriated to spend, alright, so, um, it almost feels like before putting the, uh, the cart for the horse, right? So I need to know, you need to be comfortable, ask the questions, and then, um, and I think, I guess we'll go from there. Um, I don't think there's a piece on the calendar to appropriate the money to spend, i- is there, I don't think that's come to us yet, before you. Uh, so this is, and that will have to come to you sooner than later. So we'll have this meeting, and then, um, I will probably be putting the request in, I don't have to wait to the CIP plan, I'll probably put the request in, um, at any time, and you can ask, you know, Mr. Demus, of course, your questions regarding affordability and all that stuff, and, uh, of course, you wanna know about finances, and I'm sure there's a lot of questions you wanna ask, but I wanted to get it going, um, and give you some time, um, you know, months, really, um, to talk about this, and if you want to have conversations with me, of course, in small groups or individually on a later date. So, I, I believe they have a PowerPoint presentation for you, um, uh, so, I just felt that it was, you know, especially with all the stuff going on with the school's budget and stuff, and, you know, there's probably a lot of questions, so I wanted to make sure you guys got all your questions answered. So if you have, don't have any questions for me now, uh, but if you do, great.
Counselor McGlaughlin.
I'd just like to record myself as president at this meeting, Mr. President, thank you.
Counselor McKinnon.
Through you, Mr. Chairman, to the mayor. Uh, Mr. Mayor, on these, um, I know vocational schools, ones they, when they actually, are we gonna be using, utilizing it for just the citizens of Everett, or is it gonna be utilized for surrounding towns too as well?
Great question, uh, I don't know if Mr. Lyons will wanna answer that, or Mr. Obremsky, but I'm sure eventually, you know, eventually the goal is to, uh, bring back all vocational programming.
Cause I know, uh, the reason why I'm asking, Mr. Mayor, is because, uh-
We can make some money.
-there is certain amounts of money to be made per student, once they come from a different surrounding community, and, um, I just wanted to make sure that we're part of that, if we're doing that.
Yeah.
Just like Wakefield, you know.
Great question, and, um, I'm sure if there's spaces available, if we go full-blown, I'm sure these, these six programs will be filled up with the kids that we have, but if they're not, uh, that's something, Mr. Obremsky, if you wanna come up quickly and just answer that, Mr. Lyons.
Can we invite Mr. Obremsky up, please?
Second.
I have a motion from right, Mr. Obremsky, and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Is that on?
Thank you.
Hearing, Mr. Obremsky.
Thank you. My name is Charles Obremsky, Assistant Superintendent of Schools for the Everett Public Schools. In years, obviously, at first, there would be the vocational programs that we will talk to you about this evening will be open to Everett students, but if there was room for out-of-district students, we would be willing to have those kids, tuition them in, at a rate that is set between the Everett Public Schools and the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education.
Is, uh, that, uh, Mr. Obremsky, sorry, uh-
You still have the-
Okay, thank you. With that, um, being said, the amount of per student, uh, out, out of district would be, what, probably about a $7,000 figure?
It's prob- no, it's probably closer to about, between 13,000 and 15,000 dollars for a vocational student.
Okay. So, yeah, I was, I was going on the cheapest side, so, it's 13 now.
Between 13 and 15,000 dollars, it fluctuates every year.
So, um, we would take care of our own Everett, and then we would go and look out, out of district at, at that rate?
Yes, if there were room available, yes.
Okay. Thank you on that.
Counselor DeFlorio.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chairman, through you. I think this is a great idea, uh, long time coming. I know that we had the vocational before, but then for some reason, things change, and everybody's going to college, and, you know, it just wasn't, you, there was no room, because we didn't have enough students going to the vocation, but I think things are changing now differently, we have to get people in, you know, we have to get kids in, to do electric, to do plumbing, uh, to do, uh, other things, uh, keep them safe, keep them off the street, and, uh, so I'm, I'm very happy that this is in front of us, and I know we have enough time to study this, so any questions will obviously go to the finance committee when it comes to the time, uh, for the appropriation. Is that correct, Mr. Mayor?
You, you know, I, I think, um, if they want to, uh, get these six classrooms ready for September, um, I think, uh, if you feel that these six classrooms are appropriate to construct and spend cities' dollars, I think it's about 600,000, Charlie?
It's about 700,000.
700,000, if that's something that we feel is, you know, just a start, this is just a-
Just a start, I understand.
Now, this is six classes, there's no, no electrical and plumbing in these six, uh, classes, but that is the plan, we are looking at, uh, expanding the vocational programming, but that's something that we need to talk about as a group, um, um, because that would be, you know, we have to find a location, if it's, you know, if it's add in addition to the old, to the school now, but that, I mean, that's, that's a conversation we'll have, but right now, with the-
This is at the new high school, is that correct?
This is at the new high school now, these, so these six classrooms-
So, this is, but, uh, my question is, this is time-sensitive.
This will be time-sensitive, because I'm, I'm assuming, Charlie, we want to, both, Charlie's-
I can answer that.
Right.
And we also have our architect here, that can give you a better layout of the dates, but we're already a little bit behind bidding it out, going through the bidding process, getting a contractor on board, because, as you know, we don't end school till June 29th this year, that's unofficial, of course, but right now, the last day of school is June 29th, so, we only have about six or seven weeks to actually do this construction before we start school for the next year. So it is very time-sensitive, and I think that's part of the reason the mayor brought this forward to you so quickly on behalf of the school department, so we get the money appropriated as soon as possible-
Okay.
-to be able to go through the process with the procurement officer.
Right. So my question is, we don't have an order in front of us?
Right, no, to, to, actually, to go out to bid, we have to have the money secured first.
Right, but right now, what I'm saying is, we don't have-
There's no order before you, this is-
So-
This is, this is just to show you what the, the plan is, and then, uh, to give you some information, and then the next one, uh, you know, to look forward to, is seeing an order, maybe in the next week or two, uh, you know, uh, looking for the, looking for the funding to construct.
Because according to our charter, you give us the order the next time, we can't vote on it at the same time. It either has to go to committee, or we have to, it has to be voted on the following-
Right, so that was, that was the reason-
The following day, is that correct, Mr. President? Okay.
Or the mayor could call an emergency measure, and we could vote on it.
So that's, okay, that's what I'm getting to.
So I went to a stakeholder meeting, and I saw, you know, you, there, not that there was any disconnect, but, uh, you know, did the schools know, and actually, Mr. Lyons worked for me at one time as my consultant, now he works for the schools, um, but, uh-
He did such a good job, we brought him over.
Yeah, I, he did such a good job, but, exactly, um, so I'm sitting there, and saying to myself, if we want this ready for September, the City Council hasn't even seen the, the order for appropriation funds, uh, let, you know, and I, I think I called Charlie, yeah, I said it that night, Charlie, we have to get this before the City Council immediately, and I grabbed Mr. Lyons also, um, so that's why we're here this evening, um, you need to be in the loop real, you know, real quick, um, I think a lot of you knew this was happening, cause there was a second stakeholders meeting, I'm pretty sure you knew this is, it was coming, but I also wanted to make sure you knew that there was a financial obligation from the city to, uh, for, for this to begin. Again, this is six programs, uh, our intentions are to, you know, as you said, Counselor Woman DeFlorio, is to, you know, is to bring back a full-blown vocational programming, and as you know, um, we could, you, not every kid can go to college these days, and there's so many great jobs out there that we're losing, uh, we're losing that-
We're losing people, there's no more craftsmen.
Yeah, you're right, exactly. So, I don't wanna further this, uh, this conversation, but-
But I mean, anyways, I'm 100% for this, so-
Thank you.
It's, um, I think it's a no-brainer, thank you.
Well, I have two speakers that have questions, but I'm gonna ask if they could, if, if they feel that it would be better to hold until after the presentation? Okay, great. Okay. Well, it's all yours.
Okay, I, I think the, uh, I think, uh, Mr. Lyons, and you wanna bring your group up? Yep.
If it's okay, I'd like to bring, um, our other consultant along with Mr., this is Charlie Lyons, who's a retired superintendent of Shawshene Vocational.
All in favor? Opposed, the ayes have it?
Roger Broujoir, who's retired superintendent of Greater Lowell, and I'd also like to bring our architect, uh, from CBI, Greg Christensen.
First of all, I'd like to thank you for bringing the school department before you tonight, to give you a
presentation on bringing back vocational education. As most of you know, it's been about 20 years since we had true vocational education in the city of Everett, with the changing job market, and the fact that many of our students can no longer afford to go to college, the time is right to make this move to bring back Chapter 74 vocational. I'd like to just let the committee and the people at home watching this evening, that we would not be here this evening, if it was not for the help of Mayor Carlo Di Maria, his entire administrative staff, they've been very supportive of us every step of the way on this, and we've had multiple meetings in regards to vocational education. So I'd like to thank the mayor for that. And as I said, I'd like to introduce you to our two consultants, this is Charles Lyons, President of Lyons Consulting. Charlie spent 28 years as the vocational director at Shawshene. Under his leadership, his school was consistently a Level 1 school, and earned academic commendations by the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, he's extensive background in municipal and school finance. The other consultant that works with Mr. Lyons, Roger Broujoir, he's the project director of Lyons Consulting. He has 37 years' experience in vocational technical education and administration, served as superintendent of Greater Lowell, uh, from 2000, 2000, 2013 to 2017, and he also worked at Essex Agricultural and Technical School, where he oversaw renovations, one in the amount of 65 million, and one in the amount of 135 million, so he's extensive background overseeing vocational construction projects. The third person, Greg Christensen, from CBI Consulting, he's also been the architect of record at the recent pollen renovation, renovating the gymnasium and adding additional bathrooms. He also helped us last summer with the renovation of the old high school on the first floor, and I have nothing but praise for CBI and Greg, and his company has done a great job for us. Now to the PowerPoint that you have in front of you, is I believe I put a copy on for everybody, does everyone have a copy of the PowerPoint? If you go to page three, these are the six programs that we intend to bring back for the 2018, 2019 school year, carpentry, culinary arts, health assisting, machine tool technology, and with the new casino being built in Everett, we'd like to add hospitality management and marketing. So those are the six programs we intend to start for next school year.
Can, you, you need a question while I'm in the middle of the presentation?
Okay.
What do you have, folks?
They're not true Chapter 74 certified programs, we do have them, but the amount of time the students can spend in a row in the same room is limited. Once we go to Chapter 74, they'll be able to spend more than one period, and then go to like math or English, to be able to spend multiple periods in a row in there, and be able to come up with a certificate that will help them in the job market.
Okay, good enough.
The next part on page four, this will be Mr. Charles Lyons, we'll talk to you about this.
Thank you. I, I just wanna echo Mr. Obremsky's, uh, commendation, I think, of the mayor, Di Maria, who's been wanting to build vocational programs at the high school, uh, since I've known him, and I've known him for quite a while. Uh, the superintendent and the school department, uh, is really engaged in this process, and, uh, but it's not a simple, let's just have a program process. The Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, uh, has pretty much rewritten the regulations to ensure the establishment of these Chapter 74 programs meets certain high standards, the kinds of standards, uh, that, uh, many of the regional school districts around the state have met, uh, to tremendous success. Uh, I retired from an institution that had the highest cooperative placement rate in the Commonwealth, i.e. students working in jobs for which they were trained. Uh, and, uh, we took a look at the existing programs you had, and the objective is to augment those standards so that they would, they would, they would, uh, end up getting Chapter 74 approved. It's a two-part process. Uh, the first thing is, uh, the department, uh, and Mr. Forrester needed to send a letter, uh, to the Department of Education, uh, back in September, indicating the intent to apply for the six programs, four of which you've had in a limited non-Chapter 74 state, and the other two, marketing and, uh, and, uh, marketing and, uh, and, uh, hospitality, which could be implemented without significant capital investment. Uh, Part A application, that Mr. Broujoir pretty much worked with your staff at Everett High School, uh, had to accomplish four different objectives. The first was to make sure that, uh, your local business and industry supported the establishment of these programs. So, we've had two meetings now at Everett High School, uh, each of these programs has a craft advisory committee, which consists of many of, uh, employers in the city of Everett, uh, and we've, uh, we provided to the Commonwealth sufficient information to indicate a market need for these programs. Second, we had to, we had to do a student interest survey, the eighth and ninth graders, which was conducted a couple of months ago, that indicated a student interest for these programs. Third, extensive labor market analysis, we took a look at every, uh, every business in the city of Everett or nearby, to indicate there was a, there was a need for, uh, employees, uh, in these programs, and finally, uh, we needed to look at duplicative programs of any high school that's near us, within a five-mile radius, and we received, uh, support from the principals and superintendents of both Cambridge, Ridge, Latin, Medford High School, and, and Somerville High School, uh, supporting the inclusion of these programs at Everett High School. The Department of Education did a desk audit of this, and you were the only high school in the state that had six programs approved as, as, as part of Part A with this submission. The next thing we have to do is we have to submit next week, uh, a Part B application, and again, your staff has been superb, uh, we needed to continue, uh, the craft advisory committee meetings, which we had about a week and a half ago at Everett High School, we needed to develop a list of facilities and equipment, which is gonna be before you in another week or so, indicated the kind of capital infusion of funds that would have to go in to meet those standards. We had to put together a program of studies and methods of instruction, we actually had, working with your teachers and working with us, we, we developed lesson plans and applied learning projects that will be submitted as part of the Part B application. A health and safety plan must be, must be presented for each program, which is being written now. We also have to develop a career exploratory program, in a few years, when these students are juniors, the end of their junior year and senior year, will they have the ability to go work, uh, in a, uh, in a, in an exploratory program with a local employer? Uh, we need to solidify that the qualifications of personnel meet the certification requirements established by, by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. We need to file an admissions plan, to ensure that there's no bias in terms of placement of students into the program, that it's done, uh, in a, uh, in a, uh, non-biased way. And finally, we actually have to file, and we've submitted this to Mr. Obremsky and the superintendent, uh, a budget, uh, situations for the next three years, of how these programs will be supported to maintain those standards, so that's part of the Part B application. The next steps, uh, the application for Part B will be submitted on April 13th, there'll be a Department of Education desk review, uh, to determine if we've met those standards, or if there's any missing, uh, information that needs to be provided. They then will schedule an onsite evaluation of two of the programs which are currently, uh, in existence, uh, in May and June, culinary arts and health assisting, they have expansive staff in those programs, all your five culinary arts chefs, Chapter 74 certified, and your health assisting teachers, all Chapter 74 certified. In September, after you do the renovations to the high school, to make sure the carpentry program, shop space is large enough, it isn't right now, to make sure that your machine technology shop space is large enough, it isn't right now, uh, and also that you, uh, you, uh, you expand your hospitality program and your marketing program. After that's done, the Department of Education will come out, they'll evaluate these programs, assuming we meet those high standards, we think, which we're, I'm sure you will, they'll approve those programs, uh, as of November 1st. The good news is, uh, the approval or non-approval letters are sent out for those two programs at the end of June, culinary arts and health assisting, and hopefully by November 1st for those other four programs. What that means, in terms of revenue for the city of Everett, for example, uh, you will, and I think Mr. Obremsky's gonna speak to this, but you will see an increase in your foundation budget, uh, because it's, it costs more money to run a vocational technical program than it does to run a chalkboard education program. Uh, you approved, I think, a couple of weeks ago at the City Council, correct me for saying this, a statement of interest, uh, for, uh, an expansion of Everett High School, which will include, in our hope, an additional five or six programs down the road, and maybe seven programs, in the kinds of fields that the mayor has always talked to me about, uh, plumbing, electrical, uh, heat, uh, heating ventilation and, uh, and air conditioning, to name three of the, three of the five we're looking at. We'll have to go through a similar process for those programs, you don't have the space right now to offer those programs, the hope is you will, and, uh, all hands will be on deck with the mayor's leadership and the superintendent's leadership, and hopefully our support, our help, uh, to make sure that you, uh, you're able to offer those programs in a time-sensitive way to expand those programs at Everett High School. Nice meeting you all.
The next slide, please, and Mr. Broujoir will speak about this slide.
If I could, if I could just make you aware, before we, we continue, uh, we have another committee scheduled at 6:30, now, there's only one item on the agenda, uh, what I'd like to do is, is, if we get to a point where we can take a brief intermission, take, you know, dismiss that, of course, that portion of, of the business, and then re, re-convenience so that we can continue the presentation. Um, you know, I, I'm not sure how much time was allowed, and we had a little, we had a little bit too much speaking up front, but I, we do wanna, we, we may need to do that, so I just wanna make sure you're aware of that.
Okay, so I'll be, I'll be brief then, um, and Mr. Lyons mentioned, uh, you have four existing programs, two of whom are ready to go, culinary arts, health assisting, uh, health assisting needs to have a few sinks added, uh, $9,000, I think, is in there for that, um, so they're ready to go, uh, we're all set. Carpentry and machine tech need to be, uh, expanded, the minimum square footage that the department requires, they're under. Carpentry's only about half as big as it needs to be. There's a concrete block wall that can come down between carpentry and a storage area, so that's gonna come down this summer, and expand the space into there, and then we'll meet the requirement. In machine tech, uh, it's adjacent to a printing area, and the printing area is gonna be made a little, uh, about half the size, and we're gonna take the wall down and create a master cam lab, inspection area, uh, in order to be able to meet the requirements for machine tech, uh, machine tool technology. In addition, we're gonna add two brand-new programs that don't exist. Hospitality, we've identified, with the help of staff, we've identified, uh, two classrooms, side by side, that we can take a sheet rock wall down in between, and that'll create the shop or, or the area for hospitality management. Hospitality management, uh, state-of-the-art computer lab, uh, there's a lot of, uh, computer and industry software that students learn, so, um, that'll get us started with that program. In addition to that, there'll be an area, um, we've talked to some of the business partners about some donations of, uh, a front desk, simulated front desk area, a simulated hotel room area, uh, that, that will also be part of that shop. The other brand-new program would be marketing, um, there's a central storage area, we're gonna take a piece of that, and we're gonna create a brand-new marketing shop lab, again, similar to hospitality with, uh, state-of-the-art computer lab, uh, in it. The, um, next slide is the F and E, the furniture and equipment, primarily, it's for the marketing and hospitality, because they don't have anything, so it's to buy the computers, the computer desks, um, those types of things. There are some extra computer desks there that will go into machine, machine tool technology-
This is the slide he's speaking about.
Yeah, this is the slide here. Uh, there's some additional computer desks that'll go into the machine tool technology for that master cam area, we've actually, uh, applied for a grant that would, would, um, supply the computer, the computers to go into the lab, but the grant does not cover the, the desks, so there's some extra desks for that. So that's the, um, that's the F and E slide. Uh, I think there was a slide, was there a slide in between there, that I kinda skipped over that? That's Greg's slide.
I mean, the architect, Greg Christensen, will speak about it unless you wanna stop for a moment, it's totally up to you, Mr. Napolitano.
If, if we could, uh, so we can dismiss the other piece of business and come right back to it, because I, I definitely see the value of this, I don't want, uh, any of the information lost on our members, but we also have to follow our rules as well, so, uh, I just need a motion-
Proper recess.
I need a, uh, motion for a recess? Oh, actually, I can conduct it. Alright, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask if you could please stay in the chambers, we're gonna take a brief recess, uh, we'll resume once the, uh, the next committee finishes its course of business, thank you. Thank you.